It's delightful.
Look at that app that you were talking about. That, the aerial one?
Mm-hmm.
That's, man, that technology is crazy. That was cool. That was really neat to see. Really tells you, you don't really know what the, our tech will do out there. To do that from that distance.
I'm gonna be clear. Yeah. It's supposed to, snow's supposed to get Thursday.
Thursday? I said that wet stuff.
I wonder if they'll cancel the track meet in Cameron on Thursday, Friday.
How many days? That coming outside all day? Yeah, it's here. I'm kidding, it's here.
It's a teaser.
All right, guys, it's 7:30, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Lynn, will you do roll call, please?
Madam Mayor, Jacqueline Wells.
Here.
Vice Mayor Darrell Burnham.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Sanger.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Seale.
Here.
Councilmember Tanya Lumen.
Here.
Councilmember Darrell, Derek Elliott.
Here.
All right, moving down to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Sanger?
I move to approve the April 15th, 2025 City Council Agenda as presented.
Sir, I agree.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded to approve the April 15th, 2025 Council Agenda as presented. Any discussion? All right, Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with seven yeses.
Okay, moving down to the approval of the Consent Agenda. Councilmember Sanger?
I move to approve the City Cons- uh, the City Consent Agenda of April 15th, 2025 as presented.
Sir, I agree.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to approve the City Council Consent Agenda of April 15th, 2025 as presented. Any discussion? All right, Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with seven yeses.
Okay, moving down to Citizens' Participation. This is a public comment period from Resolution Number 2C, 1996, that sets the limit for public comment for five minutes under the Agenda from Citizens' Participation, with the provision that five minutes may, time limit may be increased at the request of a member of the public or any council member. Do we have anybody that would like to speak on something that is not on the Agenda? Okay, moving down to Board Appointments and Presentations. We have a presentation of the employee of the first quarter of, for 2025 and City Manager Tom Sarvey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and Honorable Counsel. I wanna make sure my microphone's not dying. Tonight, I have the honor and the privilege of introducing to Counsel the employee of our first quarter for the city. I, I believe he thinks he's here to give a speech to Counsel, so he can still have him give his speech. But our employee of the quarter is from our water treatment plant. It is Joe Langenderfer. Starting in 1990, Joe's been with the city for 35 years. First is a seasonal. In 1993, Joe became a full-time employee and has worked in multiple different departments over the year, streets, utilities, and water treatment. Joe sets a standard for, in exemplary employee. With his amazing attitude and wealth of institutional knowledge of the city, he is the go-to for any questions about our system. He has also shown himself to be a great teacher to new operators with his amazing patience and kindness towards others. Joe's dedication to the city doesn't just stop at daily duties. At one point, Joe took a small hiatus from Rawlins and moved to Florida. While he was gone for this short time, he always stayed in touch with the treatment plant and helped to, to solve problems from afar. Joe's great attitude also extends outside of work. He has always wanted to sign up for charity work. The city is putting on or events for residents or employees. He also uses his personal time to pick up spots around town to clear up, if that means picking up trash, mowing grass, or trimming trees. Joe is definitely a very special employee and member of our community from the city of Rawlins and in the public works. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations, Joe.
Congratulations, Joe.
Thank you so much for your service, Joe.
You're welcome, thank you, guys.
Okay, moving down to a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April 13th through the 19th. So I'm gonna read this. "National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or med- emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs to prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics, is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Rawlins Police Fire Communication Center, and whereas public safety communicators are the first and form, and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Rawlins Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during their performance of their job in the past year. Now, therefore, I, Jacqueline R. Wells, Mayor of the City of Rawlins, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim the week of April 13th through the 19th, 2025, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. In the city of Rawlins, Wyoming, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens saved."
Thank you, I just wanna point out, we've had a really, really rough year, so this means a lot this year. We're actually putting off our celebration within the PD until the last week of April because I've got people at the academy, so we're looking up, but half of our full-time staff is gone right now, so... And the other part-timers are having to work at their own jobs, so we're gonna celebrate at the end of the month, but we just wanted to celebrate this week nationally, so thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, moving down to the Community Builder Award for April 2025, and I'd like to bring up the members of the City of Rawlins Volunteer Committee.
Madam Mayor and Honorable Counsel, the Community Builder Award is a monthly award the city presents to local individuals, businesses, and organizations for their volunteer service, sponsorship, promotion of programs and events, outstanding service in the interest of the city, and for other contributions significant to Rawlins' quality of life. The Volunteer Committee would like to present the April 2025 Community Builder Award to the Rawlins Senior Center Advisory Council.
So Madam Mayor would like to say a few things of this fine group, come on up. And Honorable Counsel, this is our Rawlins Advisory Council for the Carbon County Senior Services. Two of many of their goals is to raise funds to fill in the gap between their grants, their county, and their federal funding. Also, they want the Rawlins Center to have, be a welcoming place with plenty of activities for the seniors in this community. There are 13 members on this board, voting and non-voting. They fundraise through their bingo, their new bingo event, their bazaars, snowmen, and trees, which a lot of us purchase, and the list goes on and on. They also, the Council jumps in and raises donations or receives donations for their annual dinner. They actually work at that dinner, and again, the list goes on and on. Some of the things they've been able to pay for, this group of wonderful volunteers, is their phone system, communications phone system, painting the dining room, and they're fundraising for a big metal sign outside the Rawlins location. And they're, they just do it. They just do whatever needs to be done, these, this group. And so they're very hard-working members, and they're always willing to help, not just at the senior center, but a lot of our activities in this community, so very worthy tonight.
I would like to thank all of them, because if it weren't for them, we wouldn't be able to do everything that we can do at the senior center. These guys volunteer, they jump in, they, no matter what we ask of them, so, good group of people.
So you all make me in the picture. And then, here's your lady's gonna hold that. I'm just the daughter. I'm just the daughter, you know that. Okay, ready? Okay, can Council see my camera?
Yep.
Three, two, one, cheese. Congratulations, guys.
And Honorable Mayor and Counsel, I did forget to tell you that they are taking their donation of money and giving it to the Carbon County Senior Services.
That makes sense. Thank you so much, everyone. All right, moving down to a board appointment for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Appointment for an adult member. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Lumen?
Move to appoint Madison Cross to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for a term ending December 31st, 2027.
Sir, I agree.
Okay, the motions been made and seconded to, to appoint Madison Cross to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for a term ending December 31st, 2027. Is Madison here?
No, she was not able to make it.
Okay. Do we have any discussion? All right, Lynn, will you open online voting?
Yes, online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with seven yeses.
All right, moving down to Reports and Information. And the first one is a Planning and Zoning Commission Update to Counsel. Well, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Jeff Askins, I'm chairman of your Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'm here to give their annual reporting, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Great.
Um, there are seven members of our board. Twenty-five, our 2025 activities, we're gonna be working on Title 19 and continue working with micro-living homes to help their project be successful. And in 2024, we had six special use permit applications, two zone change applications, one discussion on Title 19, a total of eight applications to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Let's see, I'm just gonna give you the Reader's Digest version, you don't wanna hear all of this.
Sounds great.
Kathy Hones, Dr. Hones applied for a special use permit to have a veterinary clinic, and that was approved by Counsel on March 5th, which, that was very good, I love hearing that. Amy Poplin applied for a special use permit to have a daycare, which, that was approved. Always good to have a daycare. Union Wireless applied for a special use permit, and that's moving forward also for a new tower up on the Water Tower Hill. Another special use permit was permitted and approved for another daycare, which, that's two last year, which is always awesome to hear about. Uh, we had another, okay, now that one there. BLM was, of course, approved for, to rezone a section out south, on the south side of town, for, what was that, it was just a, they just wanted rezoned. And then, okay, we had two special use permits for those, BLM that was approved, and one that was tabled by City Council. So that's pretty much what we got done last year, and we look forward to having a productive 2025.
Wonderful, any questions? All right.
I, I do have some thank you cards, they're not much, but they're a token of our appreciation.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming to present to us.
Absolutely. Have a nice evening.
Okay, moving down to City Manager and Staff Reports. I'll pass it over to you, City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Honorable Counsel. I, I first wanna start off tonight by thanking Counsel for participating in our last two preliminary budget meetings. I felt they were very productive meetings, and we've got a much better understanding of our budget. I will work to update those documents, I'll put those into one. And we will update all the discussions that we had during those meetings, and I will send that back out to Counsel. We, we will need to find a time to go over some more of the different things that will help us balance the budget. If we need to look at potential shifts in budget or those types of things, we will bring those to the Counsel within the future. Our first official reading of the budget will be at the May 20th council meeting. The second reading will be at the regular meeting on June 3rd. And then the third and final reading of the budget will be on Monday, June 9th. That is the week that Summer Lamb is in Cheyenne. So we wanna move that early in the week, so we will shoot toward June 9th, Monday, at a special meeting for that. We know that we had planned on doing strategic planning next week. We've discussed as senior leadership of the city today, and we'd like to ask for an extension on that, if that would be acceptable to, to Counsel. What we are looking at there is, a strategic plan is an extension of the master plan. So the master plan is, usually goes out 20 years or so. It's kind of the overall master plan of the city. And we found a master plan that was performed in 2012. And that was the most recent master plan that we, we've had. So what we are trying to do is to, is to improve that document, update that document, so that Counsel can have a master plan. And then from there, we usually do the strategic plan, which is planning for the next year or two that we have. And some of these projects that we came up with, that we wanted to discuss with Counsel, currently are like not a component of the existing master plan, mostly due to age. Just that, you know, that plan's 12, 13 years old. So as senior leadership, we would like to review that master plan, come up with those priorities that, that are, are in that plan from 2012. We would, would like to have a session with Counsel to where we can put 2025 priorities in the master plan, update what needs to happen, make that a living document. And then from there, we would like to extend that to our projects that we would like, that we call our strategic plan. So in the meantime with that, staff would like to take some of the projects that we all know and that we all would, would like. We will bring those to Counsel periodically in work sessions, so that we can discuss a lot of these things until that document can be completed, and then we can move on to our strategic plan. The holdup with this, obviously, is the projects for the next year through the strategic plan need to be planned for within the budget. With the human capital side of that, to make sure that we have the people to produce these projects. So the timing of putting this off isn't the best. It would, it would be really good if we could tie the budget to these projects. But we feel that moving forward, we, we will be able to work with Counsel in the upcoming months on those projects. And if we need to do budget amendments at that time, we feel that that's definitely an option to shift the budgets into these different Counsel priorities that we have. So that's what we're asking at this time, is for an extension from next week, just on the, what we call the strategic planning. And we, we will start on that master plan, and we feel that's the first step. To, to be successful, we need our long-term plan before we can put our short-term planning into that. So if that's acceptable to Counsel, that's what we would like to pursue or to recommend to Counsel.
I, just some thoughts, I think that's, I think that works wonderful for me, Tom. I don't think any of us are gonna be sad about less meetings. But, Councilmember Sanger?
You have a possible date?
We're, we're thinking a couple of months. That master plan...
It's like this thick, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm gonna say it's this thick, I wanna give you a page number, but I'm not sure. Uh, it's, I would guess 200 pages. And it is written in 2012 language, which is still English, but it's not Counsel priority today. And so we will work with updating that, and we will either do a work session or a special Counsel meeting to where we can discuss those priorities with the intention of officially adopting that as our master plan. And then, like I said, we will have a strategic plan based upon that for the next year to, to work towards those master plans.
Any other questions?
Okay, um, let's see, we would like to remind the public and Counsel, we will have a special Counsel meeting on Wednesday, April 23rd, at 6:00 PM here in the chambers. And it would, it's concerning the transfer of a liquor license, it's the main purpose of that. So that'll be Wednesday, April 23rd, at 6:00 PM. The city has had communications with the WWDC, the Wyoming Water Development Commission, about our recent grant that we received from them of roughly 2.8, 2.9 million. We want Counsel to know that that did clear the legislature. And with, our next step in that grant is to have Counsel adopt a resolution accepting the grant, and then we can start on those contractors and start moving on that grant. So that will be soon. And that's my report.
Great, thank you, City Manager Tom Sarvey. All right, moving down to the City Attorney Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Honorable Counsel. Just a short update, nuisance ordinances. Following the second reading of the ordinances, I conducted a follow-up with all of the stakeholders that included the City Attorney's Office, Municipal Court, Rawlins Police Department, Community Development, Code Enforcement, and Community Relations. That was to make sure everyone was prepared to proceed. And during this meeting, several gaps were identified in logistics and equipment and clarification of the supporting background processes. And those are in, in, you know, are being worked on and are being addressed, as well as clarification of some of the language. There were some typos, there were some, a few things that were redundant. It always helps to have a second pair of eyes, and in this case, there were about 20, 20 pairs. So as we went through, we did see a few things. Although the changes are not dramatic, the changes do encompass some of those issues that do definitely warrant Counsel's review and potentially additional public hearing. So I'd like to, to ask Counsel if you would like a work session, it would be a short work session, or if you would just like me to preview, ahead of the next. Counsel may need to circulate it ahead of time, and that way we have sufficient time to review and get it published for public review as well.
Thoughts?
I'd like to see a work session, then we'd have community in on it too. Cause I've had several phone calls on it.
Okay.
Can I have a question? Before we did the first reading, was there a reason why 20 eyes weren't invited to look at it before? Before we did the first reading, was there a reason why twenty eyes weren't invited to look at it before council got it?
They actually were, everybody, so as we, before it brought it forward, it just, as you finally are working through things and people have had time to think, there have also been some transitions within different departments. So the perspective has changed some. And part of that included some of the logistics limitations, supporting resources, and how to best accomplish this with what we are moving toward.
Any other thoughts? Is everybody good with a work session? Okay, we'll proceed with that. Any other reports?
Yes, I'm sorry. Once, a quick update, Depot Park, back in December of last year, there was some damage to a light pole following a drunk driver crashing into it. We did receive a check from Progressive Insurance, who is a liability carrier for that driver. Restitution damages were received in the amount of five thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars and fifty cents. We have updated the circuit course to update that the restitution has been paid so that the driver's responsibility in regard to the city's restitution is cleared.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Attorney Mayberry? All right, moving down to city council updates. Does anybody have anything? All right. Moving down to unfinished business, there is none. And then down to new business, which is to approve a twenty-four hour catering permit for the Rifleman. Councilmember Sanger?
I move to approve a twenty-four hour catering permit for the Rifleman Club Bar LLC, doing business as Rifleman Club Bar, liquor license number fifty-nine, to cater the prohibition exhibition, that's an interesting thing for a catering, the prohibition exhibition music artist showcase at the parko. Sinclair Historical Theater, Sinclair, Wyoming, on Saturday, April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, from seven P.M. to ten P.M.
Circuit.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded to approve a twenty-four hour catering permit for the Rifleman Bar Club Bar, doing business as the Rifleman Club Bar. Any discussion? All right, Lynn, will you open online voting?
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, a motion passes with seven yays.
All right, moving down to the approval of, to authorize the mayor signing a letter stating the Rollins City Council has reviewed the mineral royalties grant from the state of Wyoming and the Carbon County Fire Protection District. Vice Mayor Garner?
I move to have Mayor Jacqueline Wells sign a letter stating that Rollins City Council reviewed the mineral royalties grant, M.R.G., that the Carbon County Fire Protection District of Wyoming has applied for.
Second. All right, the motion's been made and seconded to approve need to sign a letter stating the Rollins City Council has reviewed the mineral royalties grant that the Carbon County Fire Protection District Wyoming has applied for. City manager, do you want to give a brief explanation?
Madam Mayor, this is a grant that the county is filing, I believe, with the ARPA, which goes through the slipboard. And it's a grant basically for some equipment that they need within the county fire department.
Anybody have any questions? All right, Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting has closed, a motion passes with seven yays.
Okay, moving down to an executive session, Councilwoman Lewin.
Move to enter into executive session at eight P.M. per Wyoming statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five A nine and two. To consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law to consider the appointment, employment right to practice or dismissal of a public officer, professional person, or employee, or to hear complaints or charges brought against an employee, professional person, or officer, unless the employee, professional person, or officer requests a public hearing. The governing body may exclude from any public or private hearing during the examination of a witness, any or all other witnesses in the matter of being investigated. Following the hearing or executive session, the governing body may deliberate on its decision in executive session.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded to move into executive session at eight P.M. Any discussion? Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Lynn, I closed out.
Can you just verbal?
Yay.
Thank you.
All right.
Online voting has closed, a motion passes with seven yays. Thank you.
My secretary was trying to keep an eye on it, but he did it. And then missed it. I was like, hey, we're back with that thing.
Sorry, doctor, I checked. So it's based off of, I guess I would get outside. So it's based off of the state program. Oh, started in seventeen, no. And it didn't happen in twenty.
Yeah, I was in Florida, they called me about six five. Can you help me with that? And actually, I have my video phone, see him. Like I see him, but then I'm outside walking, so I was like, can I get a green? It's cold here, you're out turned here. Well, I've kind of had to. This is my grandmother. I just wanted to absolutely my butt. And then it was like... And then we got back to the water. We were working on that water graph over there. Over there about a highway there properly.
Some things that are looking, so it's a combination of really looking at yourself and the whole, really, chances with the other people in your life. Also, maybe learning about things in the county. And so it's one day each month, four days. Yep, so January, we have the kickoff, we bring in a speaker for out of town, motivation. At that kickoff meeting, we invite past classes, because we always have really good speakers. And then we have kind of a little time to give to other classes. And then the instructor, our full day is February. So then February, education day, March is how services day. Labor, yes, government day, no, I haven't, so I will. Industry day, June is tourism and ag day. And then July is nonprofit day and graduation. So it goes from January. Sixties. Yes. With the kickoff, with the graduation day, and on top of that, there's one day that everybody goes to Cheyenne for legislative. And they go to either breakfast or lunch with others in literature classes in state and have lunch or breakfast with the governor, come to the Capitol, be introduced on the House floor, be introduced on the Senate floor, yeah. So, yeah, and it's based off of the state.
For me, just get down. See a bunch of things, right, breakfast, I never stop.
Yes, that's exactly what it is.
Okay, that's something I can do.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is.
Well, when they start, the guy that started it three weeks ago, he won't be out in the summer. He's like, until, maybe a year or two. The last one, he's supposed to get someone in the night. I'll have him come over the weekend. Yeah, he's been there in the state. And he's actually going to the Academy next month, we got a bit. So he'll graduate in July. If you can take it, if you want, I think, for, I hope you can, that's gonna be good. My mother-in-law was a cook at the old Japanese. So I got to go up and sit with her, play basketball. She was up there cooking, it was open, she... That's not too far from anywhere. She, we were just saying, I don't know, it's time, so. Well, we made a day out of it. Get up there, graduation is like ten or eleven, a couple hours. Usually we stop for lunch at Casper. You probably know where people are. Chiefs and sheriffs are all there, I had a speech. They asked me to get the key to it last year and every four. Oh, really, at graduation? Out of nowhere, right, so the one before me was the Attorney General. That's our name, Bridget Hill. And they asked me, and I'm like, how'd you guys go from Bridget Hill to being Attorney Generals? So I opened up, I said, you know, well, last graduation, the Attorney General for the state of Wyoming, the speaker. I don't know how the hell you all got stuck with me, I know, I know. Oh, that's funny. Oh, that's cool. I think Mark Francisco, the chief of Cheyenne, was the speaker of the last year. Hopefully, I'm...
I knew a lot of these guys back in the day.
We're still living on, there's still some, you know Clint?
Yeah, back here in Ohio, he's quite a long man. Actually, we're together. There's a few others. See, they've changed over, police chief in Casper.
Well, they just lost Keith with the ARPS, and I haven't met the new guy yet. He came on through, it's okay.
They have three.
Keith is a sheriff, I don't know, I didn't, I never read the story of why he had, why he left. He's been there a while. They have five years or seven years. He just, he just retired last fall. He had come from Farmington, New Mexico.
Oh, okay.
Saint Sheamus, yeah.
I liked Keith a long time ago.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a story of why he retired. It could just be that he was done.
Well, five years, he probably got bested, retired a lot. I was wondering what happened to Travis Keltowski.
He's still the chief.
Travis is, it was Sean Keltowski, he's the one who graduated. It's his brother.
Yeah, because Travis is our close family.
Yeah, Travis is, they were Sean.
So funny, he's working two together. When I started looking at him, Sherley was the first one I heard. They never called him, it's okay, because Travis was meant to get him. Well, he gets it. I got a friend that I went to the academy with, that I've been a part of recently, named Dinesh Rattila. Well, Dinesh is telling me how he's friends with Travis and this and that academy. They went to the FBI National Academy. So then I put in Richard, I said, hey, can you mention our buddy, Sherley, to see if he'll talk to you to help prepare for training? So Dinesh calls me back, he goes, hey, listen, he said he talked to you, but just so you know, he's friends with other guys that are putting in. So I was like, all right, so I called up Travis, so we talked, and I didn't push him. But I, he was the first cop I talked to in Wyoming.
Really?
And then when I got here, I met him, I don't see him very often, but we get along just fine. And we share another good friend in common.
Okay, yeah, we went to high school together.
Was he, was he younger than you or the same?
I think he was younger, Sean is our brother.
So Travis is probably five years younger. She did a good job meeting through the loss of Sergeant, Sergeant Nevada.
Sean died, he died a lot of trouble. We took a tractor apart and hoisted it to the top of the high school.
Put it back.
Put it back together.
That's a good one. How did they get it back? Is it still there?
He probably did it, but maybe two or three things.
I'll mention to Travis, just something he's been through. He lost a lot of weight.
Has he?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was his brother, we did some crazy things. We learned on the fly. If you can get the spare tire tied on it, if you can pull it up and have the tire fall in, it goes over the top. The only thing that can do it now is you can kind of pull the foot of it and cut it. You don't find it. Yeah, it was fun, but I tried to find it in a place like these.
What's his name, Sean? I'll see Travis, he has Casper next to him. Should we go back?
I'll produce myself, I just kind of Google it one day, just see what happens.
I think the Coates family runs two companies.
Yeah, they'll be, they're out with the kids, the children.
Yeah, 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 they're in there.
They're out to see the ones who share them.
Oh, okay, is it towards the mountains or towards the plains?
It's towards you cross.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Over the top, and that's where the Keys, right?
Okay.
There were two of us.
They got big two drawers.
They were good.
They're bigger than their shots, right?
They were good guys, but they, they were out there, good family.
I think the Coltis was out in the children.
Yeah, they're out there, so, they're cows.
For the cattle or something else?
I think it's cattle.
I was talking to him one day, he was going out there to butcher a pair or something.
Yeah, no, they were right out, we lived up on the hill. It shared, get off the interstate, we'd head out towards.
U Cross, so, so you were kinda out of the town, town.
We were out at the suburbs, where we lived, but you could see over Sherley.
That must have been pretty good, towards the mountain there.
Yeah, the mountains, out in the background, shared all the lights at night, so, pretty beautiful, but better room, you could just see.
I've never been out to like, what's the other town out there?
Big Horn is towards the mountains.
Yeah, Evelyn Valley, I think, is.
And then you have Dayton, and Manchester, which is, uh, yeah, and then you saw.
I haven't been there yet.
Dayton is really cool, and, uh, Manchester's nice, but Dayton's just kinda magical, a town out there.
I haven't been across fourteen, fourteen A, I've been around sixteen.
Yeah, it's okay, um, sixteen will get you more up into the high peaks, you can see the peaks, the other one, you're not in the peaks.
Oh.
You're kind of more, it's, it's kind of long, it's up on top. And then if you get to Burgess Junction, which is up there, it splits.
Yeah, is there a restaurant there?
There's, yeah, there's a couple right there, and the road goes over to Loveville, over there, um.
Is that the fourteen A, cause the other one goes to Shell?
Yeah, it's fourteen A, it's, they say is the, uh, it's called the old highway, it's like, drives like.
Down.
It goes right down, and you're like, that's up there, Sherley, we're going to Loveville.
Big one's.
The other one's kind of a windy, I gotta get the Shell, I gotta get the Shell, it's kind of a windy.
How's that, uh, how's the Big Horn Canyon in there?
It's, it's, it's fun to go to.
The Tensley, yeah. That's the other, that's Tensley Canyon, that's sixteen, the southern end, we're talking about.
Of, uh, local bears in Canyon, you cannot both clear up in there, it's beautiful.
Well, we're, I think we're gonna go to DuBois tomorrow.
DuBois?
Yep, and then we were just gonna go to like Laramie and Casper Thursday, Friday, but it's like, it's summer.
It won't sell better at the lower?
Well, yeah, it's totally weird.
We get the worst storms this time of year.
Thursday's not gonna be as bad, cause the temperature's still gonna be up, but Friday, the temperature, for us, Justin Rollins, Thursday, they're saying, four to five inches. And then Friday, they're saying, two to four inches again. Yeah, and the temperature on Thursday, you know, it's gonna be high at forty-six, but on Friday, it's still, it's gonna be in the thirties.
Too much to cover.
But there's more in other places, like, you know? I think it was Casper, I haven't got Casper, Casper has a winter storm, I think.
Oh, they do?
They got a winter storm watch. Says it was still possible, Metrona, lower elevations, Johnson, travel could be difficult, hazard conditions. So the cumulations could be hindering during days.
That was, that was this weekend, that was Sunday, my sister lives.
Where? I've been down in the country.
No, my sister lives in, are you in?
Pennsylvania.
No, my brother lives in, my sister lives in.
I can't keep your friends, sorry.
It's okay, I'm from, she lives right next door to my dad, this field, my dad's house is like, here, this is my grandfather's.
What time is it?
South of work. I lived in Burwick, which was the first one.
That is nowhere near the ocean.
I didn't say it was.
It's nowhere near the ocean.
And she still has some of the Christmas lights on, too, for Christmas, the tree outside.
Oh, you could get away with that, huh?
Oh, you're out by a gun, right?
Yeah, out by Gun, Gun Place on the water.
Yeah, they got a river that goes through the beach. It's pretty epic.
No, but, no, it's where all the people who are gay come from, from, from.
Gun Place? I was there as a teenager.
They have some of the cool stores, and they have the Agonore Playhouse, and it has all these. There's one place you can enjoy, it's like, making plays, and the floor, you walk, the floor is like, flat, and then it's for like a function, and then everything that's played, it rises up in the back. So you can see the, and it's really cool, really nice, it's really cool.
I used to always have that kid who'd train.
Yes, I used to like it.
Next, next time you go, did you get the lobster roll in there?
I ate the lobster. I ate the whole thing.
There's two parts of lobster, one of them is mixed with bread, which I don't think, but.
I remember that, that's a part, you know, male thing.
Male, and it's cold, the other one is lobster meat warm, in drawn butter, on a toasted hot dog roll.
But it's a special hot dog roll, the hot dog roll is not like the Beville on the top.
It's more square.
It's square, it's square, and they toast it, and they toast it grilled on both sides.
That's the, and I believe that's probably Canadian, I don't know why.
No, but the one with the Beville is called Coney Island Hot Dog Roll, which is really one of the, you know, it's kind of a.
Well, you were the last, my wife and I and my daughter ordered lobster, like, the real.
Yeah.
They brought it out, we sat and looked at it for about five minutes, so, so these people brought out bibs, and they were showing us how to do it, and we're like.
Cracker and.
We're like, whoa.
Got butter.
Got butter, and, so, when we got done, we had a whole list.
Cause he sends me a picture, and with.
What do I do?
No, he just sends me a picture of his, his wife and his daughter, and I was like, I said, I knew exactly where he.
You were right where we were. We were at the White House in Portland, Maine, we were at the White House, and she says, oh, you're in Portland, like, how in the world can you gather that from that picture?
Because I knew the picture, and I did it to Jim, and Jim was like, is he massive?
When I was in college.
That's awesome. When I was in college, I worked at a secret restaurant in the shorty Connecticut, and they had something called the Lazy Man's Lobster.
It's famous for everything, it has.
So it's a crock, and it's just lobster meat in it, covered with the stuffing.
Yes, with butter, with butter.
With butter, oh.
Real butter.
That'd be good.
See, this is the picture.
I didn't know what to make of it, it was very, so.
Oh, okay.
Something up in the.
That's a pretty good job.
What, chest area, when you call it a crab, open up, all those black stuff.
Oh, that's tamale.
Where.
I kind of really like that kind of thing.
Kind of rip up the rest of it, that lady.
You don't eat that.
It's the lungs and stuff.
Yeah, cause I did, we did.
Because this is, this is.
That was just a thing on my bucket list.
Crabs are bigger than beryllium, but I always prefer crab cake. The meat's picked out, it's mixed up, it's like. Eating crabs in beryllium is not worth it for me, you get very little meat for a lot of them.
That's all lobster is. There always is a little bit of crust.
But I always liked crab cake, and not just the lungs.
I almost went back this year, my sister-in-law's graduating from the same school that my wife graduated from.
Should've gone back, you know the way around?
She wanted, wanted me to go on a site next week, it's May, probably two or three weeks.
It's my first weekend, man. Where is the, uh, where was the graduation?
Uh, Manchester.
No, my sister went to a school in Manchester, at St. Anthony's.
Yeah, this one is a. Yeah, this one, I, I think all this one had like, is a campus, it's like a basketball team, it was in a big arena that was theirs, and I think that's kind of all they had.
They started off with a really small school, and they really have.
Built up a lot of online.
Especially online, and then they advertise out here, and I have known, just not used a lot, and, um, your, your daughter might be, your sister.
And they said that at the graduation, they had one person from all fifty states, graduating, yeah, from every state.
They have very popular, they advertise TV here, and then, um, some of the offices have given, or went, or closed, some of those guys have gotten into their use of their color as well. So, they really have marketed ahead of time, and really, uh.
Realized that.
Their potential, so that is big, big, which is amazing, and helps us all.
My sister and my brother-in-law went to St. Anthony's, in Manchester, which is also the White House Pro Secretary, Caroline Levin. I had a friend, I had a couple friends at the University of Hampshire, so I spent time there.
Yeah.
My sister graduated, it's closed now, but we went to a place that I heard you heard of, Hilltop Steakhouse.
Yes.
In Nashua.
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 That's where we stayed.
It was Nashua, I haven't been there in years, but.
Hilltop, they started, they were the one that's, um, it's.
There was Summers, Summersville.
Summersworth, Summersworth.
There was a couple of them. They're all closed. It's steakhouse.
But there is a town, it's Hilltop, Hilltop Shovel, that we moved to this year.
I liked Nashua, it was a clean town, cause I remember, it sounded like it did a good Massachusetts.
All of it, the whole state is from the top to.
Yeah, it was one of our final states we were looking at.
And then they started, you know.
Well, I, I know that it's very.
Well, they, they, they put the governor's sheep in a hot water.
She lives, she lives, but Nashua was pulling its own, it's, um, that's ten years.
Well, no, it's just they have the, they have people from Mass, they can meet with Massmates, which is, they.
They'll commute from Nashua to Boston. That's what I heard when we were there.
They commute from Long Island.
But it was so insane, it was a worse state system, cause we, we followed Google or Siri or whatever, from Nashua to Boston. But every time you were getting off, and.
I didn't know what.
It, I had no idea where I was, like, no clue, yeah, I thought it hit up the ocean, but there is no ocean back there.
There is, they hide it, behind the trees.
It was hidden well, and then, and then where they told me the ocean was, I could see the other side, so it was like.
That ain't it.
It's like, is that?
He needs, if he goes back, he needs to go to Newark.
Yeah, I thought we were on the ocean, I really truly did.
You were, but it's not flat like, you know, Florida, where it's just a straight line, it's all dunes and roads and.
Where he was, yes, but he.
So we stopped at every toll station, toll booth, every one of them, we stopped, paid, got all of them, they had my credit card, like, for all of them.
That's like.
We stopped and we paid them, it's like, we actually dug out money so that we could avoid it.
We had to cut.
We got like a seventy dollar toll booth or something.
Yeah, I have an EZ Pass.
We have an EZ Pass, we use it, we, we use it when we went back.
Yeah, it's like, true. But I guess one of them we either missed, or I got lost and turned around after I went through a toll or something, cause.
EZ Pass would pick, pick up the money in Nashua.
It doesn't work in Colorado, cause I tried to see, the kids always gonna keep using it.
To go to the airport or something.
And it doesn't, they have their own, so, it's not, but when we moved out, we moved back, and then we canceled the account, and then when we went back, it was nice.
I just love.
They re, they re-hold them for a same account, and put money in it on it, so that we.
They charged me like a dollar twenty-five or something, so, but, but we go back a year, so.
We go back a long way.
Maine, so there's tours.
Massachusetts, it's really bad.
We went through one of those in Maine, it was like fifteen bucks, just for like, just a little stretch, it was, it was right into the river. You, you go over the river.
Oh, that was New Hampshire.
Out of New Hampshire, though, and you go over the river into Maine, and there was a.
New Hampshire's only a small little slice right there.
I don't believe, but you had, you.
But it was on the other side of the river.
And, yeah, it's not a river, it's, it's the ocean.
See, there was the ocean in there.
C K and Charles on the other side of it, taxi RT right there.
Maybe that was Iceland, that's the Canada, bring them up.
Oh, my gosh, you need to go back.
I could've thrown a rock and hit them out there.
You need to go back, so.
Well, I almost did.
You locked yourself out?
Well, I don't know, I.
You should just go.
Do it.
If I do something.
Well, we were doing play, and they wanted to do a city government, they said, we're just gonna put our own, so. We just got to fire, and I said, if you move, call the.
He just went home.
I said, we could, we could do all these things, and now, I asked Sunday, and they said, they were planning, we want to.
You said Brumline.
Brumline, you were.
If that's the plan, then that's a year from now.
But I was, but.
Yeah, I was just gonna.
I thought it was Brumline, but someone said it's wrong base, and I thought, well, I haven't had a chance to.
What's that? Yeah.
I don't know.
Make it every time.
I'll let you know if it looks good, or I don't know, I looked a whole hour before.
What's that?
Our, our youth group wanted to do a city government, right, and told them, like, you take them to the fire station.
Did you find any more, hear any more about the job interviews, something at the, at the high school?
Oh, that was in eight, that's next week.
So you're next week?
That's really perfect. This is not exactly, that's the other, can you send it to me, and I'll have somebody go over or talk to them or something, who's a contact, that would be good.
Yeah, yeah.
Would you tell us where you saw it?
Yes.
Who's that?
High school, how are you feeling?
See, the only way I recently, I think the reason that my mom, she sent it to me, she just sent Heidi's, or this lady, is that Heidi, so.
I'll have, I'll have Amber, your, your sister, and your child, send it.
And it was, it's a nice thing that they're doing, it's just, how many kids do interviews because they're struggling on the phone, or something.
We get a bunch of kids in and out all day for a chat show.
I had one that wanted to do this, I don't know whatever, I never heard from her, I did.
I don't really, I didn't follow through.
Well, it's their, it's their responsibility, cause they need to.
Yeah, a lot of them do.
One was called, Shane, if they didn't follow through, that means she got it somewhere else.
I forgot to ask people earlier, do you want to buy a ticket for a gun from the volleyball club? It's a Rossi model ninety-five thirty-three Winchester level action rifle, like, full ten dollars per.
I'll get you later.
Okay, let's do Friday, Thursday.
I'll let you bring a team.
I know, nobody carries cash anymore, we should get.
You take a card?
I actually probably would, is Bio selling it? Then I have to buy them all.
Let me see the picture of something.
Looks like.
Yeah, that's what, that's what you might say.
It's been a large loop, the, uh, Little League Angel, that, always sold those, and I wanted two years in a row.
Really?
And I've got, I've got forty-five, but it's still in a box.
Wow.
And, uh, and sometimes, cause I wanted.
Cause the volume of tickets, the forty-five, like, a single action, like, the old.
It was a revolver.
Do you want the action piece?
There's still gonna be a eight thirty-four.
I enjoyed the.
I don't know why.
Yeah.
Do you want to buy a rocket for a?
A gun?
A gun, it's Rollins.
Who's, who's that, um, volleyball, volleyball star?
Well, they're ten dollars.
Kicks it out.
I'll have to go up and get, um, can I, do I?
Yes, yeah.
Until.
I will not have any with Jim Sheeran.
They didn't, they didn't like.
Okay, yeah.
But I will take.
I felt that had a cannon. I didn't see anything, but that was like.
Thank you, sir.
Get him out, go shoot.
Okay, so I have something.
Yeah.
Okay, now the one.
So I'll be there and look back.
Great.
There's especially.
No, you can't. See, Dale and I are always.
It's, we were hungry.
I would have hardly invited, unless it's like a. I've heard the body's pretty.
Oh, you said, hi, thirty-four?
Yes, yes.
Oh, yes.
Was it a shotgun, but you had like state shotgun.
Here it is coming.
I thought that the other day when I rode my horse.
I'm looking for another one. Going out on the dirt bike sounded fun. Next day was not fun.
Perfect. Have this to me, I'll just.
Reach out of.
Okay.
So that's, it's correct, that's, that's right.
Perfect. All right. Maybe he left.
This is just too much.
Autopilot, I'm done.
This is, maybe this is the current turning trigger all the way.
All right. So I have a motion to come out. Councilmember Lemon?
Move to come out of executive session per Wyoming statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five A nine and two at eight thirty-eight P M.
Circuit.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded to come out of executive session per Wyoming statute sixteen four four oh five. Any discussion? Lynn, will you open online voting?
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, moving down to approval of some executive session minutes. Councilwoman Lemon?
Move to approve the executive session minutes of April first, twenty twenty-five, regular city council meeting as amended.
Circuit.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded to approve the executive session minutes of April first. Any discussion?
As presented or?
Admitted.
Admitted, okay, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly.
Oh, it's fine, never mind, can we?
No, we don't have to amend it.
Don't have to amend it?
No, because it's written in there, the.
Oh, it was, okay.
So as presented.
As presented.
As presented, yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay, thank you.
Do you, do you friendly second that?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Lynn, when you're ready, can you open online voting?
What's looking? What's going on?
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with six yeas and what came, the one that came was Vice Mayor Garnon.
Okay, so I have any councilmember singer?
I move to authorize Attorney Mayberry to engage a mediator and a third party investigator and incur the cost thereof.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion made and seconded.
Oh, is he already seconded?
Yeah.
To authorize Attorney Mayberry to engage a third party mediator and.
A mediator and a third party investigator.
Mediator and a third party investigator. Any discussion? Lynn, when you are ready, let me know.
Is that the, excuse me, the second, was it councilmember Seelaw?
Uh, Dr. Grant.
No, you're fine.
Okay. So we'll have to do a roll call, we'll have to, or just do.
Roll calls, fine.
Nope, um, Madam Mayor Wells?
Yay.
Vice Mayor Garnon?
Yay.
Councilmember Sanger?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yay.
Councilmember Seelaw?
Yay.
Councilmember Lemon?
Yay.
Councilmember Ollia?
Yay.
The motion passes with seven yeas.
Okay, um, were there any objections to anything discussed in executive session? All right, where there are no objections for matters discussed in executive session, seeing that there are no objections to executive session, we will, um, adjourn this meeting at eight forty-three P M. And our next meeting will be a special city council meeting on April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, at six P M.
Can you talk? Do you have a second? You may have a nice grab of a signature.
Have a good night.
Give my.
Yes.
Can I get a, nevermind. I might ask tomorrow for another charger.
Oh, for the. Yeah. I, Lynn can order stuff.
Oh, okay.
I don't, I don't think they have.